And we're live.
All right.
How you doing today, Jeremy?
Good. About yourself?
Doing really good. I've never heard that name before. That's a really cool name.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Uh, I guess my grandmother named my father and I'm a third.
Ah, interesting. Well, that's cool. Passed down.
Yes.
Yeah. So are you from the Lansing area?
Born and raised.
Born and raised.
Yeah, yeah.
In Lansing. Oh, okay. Okay. So South Lansing?
Yeah, yeah, in the hood.
Well, um, so do you still live there?
No, no, I'm actually a Delta Township resident now.
Okay, okay. Um, so how was that, girl? I feel like this is awkward. This interview is slightly awkward. It just feels strange, like a little, little stiff. I don't know.
Where was I at earlier, actually? And, uh, and I felt like it was the hood. And I'm like, man, I don't miss this, you know? But the thing is where I was, you went across the street, you got Vons Market, um, I think Rio's over there, across the street from the Boys and Girls Club. So you know to stay away from there, right? So where I was at, we knew everybody there. We knew everybody that was doing the dirt or whatnot. But, uh, overall, you know, solid. I'm very thankful for my upbringing. My mom did a great job.
What is it about like the hood that keeps it the kind of that cycle, right? Like what keeps people in the cycle of just doing the things that they do?
Well, you know, it's systemic, right?
Yeah.
Um, man, uh, the oppression of, you know, African Americans, black people, colored people, blacks, whatever you want to call them, right? Um, or call me, right?
Yeah, can we, sorry, can we adjust the mic?
Sure.
Just move it down slightly.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't see your face.
Okay.
You're good, though. You're good.
All right.
All right, cool.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, again, it's just systemic. It's unfortunate, but I can tell you now that in my opinion, I can speak for Lansing. Every kid in Lansing has an opportunity to be great. I had an opportunity. I still have an opportunity. Be thirty-two this year. Um, the Promise Scholarship is incredible in Lansing schools. If you, if, if you can stay on the right path, it starts at home. It starts with parenting. So if you can stay on that right path and have a support system, you can do great things. You know, I like to share with people that there are valedictorians and salutatorians at Eastern Everett and Sexton, right? So there are kids who are actually doing what they need to do, but then you do have that population that doesn't have a support system. It's not being raised to what I feel to be the best way, and they're being set up for failure.
How do we change that? I mean, because you, you had mentioned that it's the parents. It starts with the parenting. So clearly there's a lack of guidance in amongst especially the youth, right? I mean, because that's where we're seeing a lot of the gun violence. Obviously, it's parenting. I mean, at some point, it boiled down to the parenting. How do we change that? What can be done?
You know, there are a lot of great programs in this area, a lot of great, you know, staff members in the schools. I, you know, I work with the Lansing School District.
What do you do with them?
I'm actually a public safety officer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I'm on the ground, boots on the ground.
What is that job like?
You know, basically a police officer, you know, in the schools.
What kind of, what kind of stuff do you see?
You name it. You're gonna make me lose my job. I'm not gonna lose my job today, okay?
Well, I could imagine because, um, one of the things that, um, is apparent is the gun violence and obviously drugs, right? That's probably pretty rampant in Lansing. I just had a judge on last week, um, who's running for Eaton County. And she was saying that, um, I think it was meth. She, I think she was saying it is like crazy. Like, I mean, there's so many more meth cases now than there have been ever for Eaton County.
Yeah, I believe it. You know, we definitely deal with a lot of, um, vape pens. You know, none of that, you know, paraphernalia is allowed on school district property.
Right.
So definitely confiscated a lot of those. And I try to educate the kids too. You know, we give them chances, right? It's all public information in the handbook on the website.
Yeah.
So the school district website, um, it's, it's nasty for your body, man. You know, I'm pretty sure.
Why are kids smoking that now? I mean, it's like you had mentioned, it seems to be a big thing. Like, I think it started kind of with the Juul. I, I remember Ubering not, it was like probably four or five years ago. And I did a lot in East Lansing, and that was one of the things I seen a lot where people were dropping their Juul pen into my vehicle all the time.
Yeah.
Like, so many people had them.
You know, I see the breezes and I think those are relatively inexpensive. Um, what you do, got some of the higher ends ones that, uh, you know, they got the juice, right?
Oh, yeah.
So we're talking THC at that point, right? So that's when it's really serious. Um, it's, it's unfortunate. Again, it has to start with parenting. Of course, with marijuana being legalized now, I'm not gonna go there, you know? I'm not gonna say I'm for or against it, right? It's had its medicinal properties.
Right, right.
That was, you know, established years ago.
Well, I mean, regardless, it's not meant for kids to be consuming during school hours.
Hundred percent.
I mean, even after hours, they probably shouldn't be doing it.
You gotta be twenty-one.
Right.
That's reality.
But if it affects your cognitive abilities and you shouldn't be doing it until you're twenty-five.
There it is. Well, I think I just heard something where someone's proposing forty years old.
What? Now that's ridiculous.
To either drink or smoke. I don't know. I, I, uh, just.
Life is almost half over for some people.
I've been listening to the urban radio station on Sirius. Incredible, man. Awesome.
What is, what is the urban channel?
Man, it's, it's.
I don't have Sirius XM.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, uh, you know, black people, man. They're, you know, um.
Like jazz type music?
I think Heather, no, it's talk. It's all talk, right? Right? So politics, right? You know, just culture. Uh, I think Heather B actually has her own little, little, you know, snippet on there. But there's, uh, L. Sharpton does, running L. Sharpton.
Okay.
So pretty cool, man.
That is cool.
I mean, I've listened to a lot of NPR over the last few years.
Do you ever get overwhelmed with politics?
Listen, man, I've gotten overwhelmed with the stock market, man. Man, I.
I've learned to not pay attention to it. My, my, my 401Ks dropped like thirty thousand dollars within the last like year.
That's why, hey, I switched mine to BlackRock, man, back in, right in the first week of January. You know, BlackRock is the, the financial institution.
Right, right, right.
Right? So they had, uh, I forgot exactly what it's called, where they just hold your money.
Okay.
You know, you can only do that maybe twice, I wanna say, over the life of your 401K with, at least with my employer, which is technically the state of Michigan.
Right.
But, uh, man, it was an awesome option, right?
Yeah.
Now you go from ten percent a year down to, you know, losing two, three percent. I'm like, ah, I gotta get this money out of here, man.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's rough. It's rough for a lot of people.
Yeah. Now that's something that I do spread to young people as well, is
Financial wealth?
The, the need to invest your money, right?
Yeah.
You know, Bitcoin's down sixty percent. That's tough. That's, that's really tough.
Invest in Bitcoin?
I got some Jazzy Man. Bitcoin, I mean, you'll be lucky to get Bitcoin running five hundred percent in the next ten years. You'll be lucky. In my, that's my opinion. My opinion, right? But man, I've seen on a daily basis, you see stocks, I don't care if we're in a stock market crash or not. You see plays, you know, these tickers run, you know, five to a hundred and fifty percent, two hundred percent every single day.
So you're a big stock guy?
Ah, man, listen. If, if you're, if you're eighteen, you got a job, open up a Weebull, open up a TD Ameritrade. I think Charles Schwab owns, you know, TD Ameritrade. Just give it a go, man. You can day trade, you can swing trade, right? You gotta have twenty-five grand in the, you know, in a portfolio to technically day trade, but, um, you know, throw a thousand in there. You living at home with mom and dad? Throw a thousand in there. Do some research. Download StockTwits. You guys ever heard of StockTwits?
No.
StockTwits is incredible, man. It's an application called StockTwits.
One thing, uh, I have a friend who's a realtor and he invests most of his money, extra money into properties. And he's saying that, you know, regardless of how the stock market goes or the economy, regardless of any of that, you'll always own something in property. So like, even if you wanna go sell it, you might lose some money, but you still own that. Like you still have an investment there.
I hear you. Yeah.
Do you invest in properties or anything like that?
Man, I haven't gotten there yet.
No. Do you plan on it?
I'm renting right now and I see what my landlords go through, so. But if you can flip a property or, you know, sell, I mean, you know, I'm definitely open to it. Then I see all these commercial properties that are, you know, they look worn down or they're not filled. It's a tough business, not, you know? Did you hear about China, how, you know, the housing market and supposedly, I just heard from a guy, I didn't, I didn't research it. I just heard it earlier today that, uh, you know, Chinese have gutted, you know, bank accounts and all this and are, you know, freezing their accounts. And so now.
In China?
Yeah, yeah. So now homeowners of China are not paying their notes, supposedly. But I mean, that's just, uh.
Should we look that up?
Unfortunate. I think you should, man.
Let's look it up.
Yeah.
Keep talking.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, I really appreciate you. Um, I've been in Delta Township about five years now. I coach basketball at Willow Ridge. My son will be in third grade. My other son will be in first grade. I wanna be the voice of the community, uh, running for seventh district Eaton County Commissioner. Something I've always wanted to do.
I don't know why.
Well, you know, going door to door, passed out about, you know, three thousand of these actually.
Whoa.
So.
You know what? I, were, were you in Frandor today?
No.
No?
No.
Did you have people in Frandor?
No, no. So the seventh district is just Delta Township.
Oh, okay.
Maybe even just a portion of Delta Township.
Okay.
There's about, I believe, fourteen commissioners in Eaton County total.
Okay.
So, you know, you, you all come to a board and, uh, you know, you have an agenda, right? Minutes and things like that. So I wanna be the guy that constituents, that residents of Delta Township can come to with their issues and concerns, and I address those at the table. And, and come together with the rest of the board to make sure that those issues are heard and then concentrate on, on countywide issues. Why not? I've already heard so many different issues that I'm not even gonna address right now.
Roads? I'm sure that's number one.
That's one, you know, uh, veterans, uh, just got hit with one today regarding Eaton County sheriffs or Eaton County deputies, you know, not, you know, uh, you know, terminating their employment, not wanting to work anymore because they are not getting paid what they deserve.
Wait, Eaton County sheriffs are not working because they're not getting paid?
The deputies, the deputies. That's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that, you know, that state police is gonna have to ramp up.
Why is that? What do you mean they're not getting paid?
Listen, like I said, I, 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 not, not enough, you know? What are they making? I don't know what they're making. Twenty-five dollars an hour?
They're not making enough money.
Fifty grand? I don't know. I have no idea.
Do you think police make enough money for what they do?
Do I make enough money for what I'm doing in the schools? No.
Well, I mean, that's a whole nother thing because teachers don't make enough money. And I think that's a huge issue.
I hear you.
Um, but going back to China real quick, uh, this is CNN, says Chinese authorities will start refunding bank customers whose accounts have been frozen for months, following some of the biggest protests the country has seen since the start of the pandemic. Customers from four rural banks in central province of Henin and one in neighboring Anui? I don't know how to say that. Province will be repaid by authorities starting Friday, according to the statements, late Monday, by the provincial financial regulators. The first payment will be sent to customers with a combined amount of less than five hundred or fifty thousand, which is equivalent to seventy-four hundred dollars. Woo, that's crazy.
Wow, wow.
That's insane.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know what kind of insurance, you know, they have through there. If they have an FDA, I have no idea, but, you know, over here.
Probably not.
Supposedly, we're covered up to a million dollars per account, from my understanding.
That's insane. China's such a crazy place, especially like, I think we're starting to see it more and more, especially after the pandemic and all the rights that were kind of taken away from them. Like, I mean, they were locked in their houses and couldn't go outside.
Yeah.
And arrested.
Yeah. Now we got monkey pox.
Yeah.
Uh, what, what's the other one?
COVID.
You got, you got COVID, monkey pox, and I'm telling you, there's, oh, oh, there was a case of polio found. Did you hear that?
No. But there's a vaccine for that, like, uh, a pretty.
I heard that it hasn't been given since the year two thousand. That's what I heard. And I did have a gentleman tell me that when he was younger, that he took the, you know, the polio vaccine and that it was a lifelong vaccine. So, so maybe they.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, this is stuff I haven't researched. This is just, uh, stuff blown in the wind.
Yeah, that's the thing with today, like in, in the news and everything, like, most of the things that I see and that I mention is like always like things I just kind of see in passing. I never researched this stuff. It's just too much.
No, you know, I'd like to. You got to, right?
Things that interest me, I definitely do.
Yeah, well, I, I believe Google is such a great resource, but you have to use discernment.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yeah, I use DuckDuckGo.
Duck, I've heard of DuckDuckGo. It's been around actually many, many years, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's less biased. You can typically find things that Google like, like represses.
Well, I mean, it's like, Wikipedia's nice, but anyone can go in there and edit it.
Oh, yeah, that's the problem with it.
It's incredible, man.
Yeah.
This episode is brought to you by Red Bike Delivery. This delivery service operates only using battery-powered, eco-friendly transportation. Red Bike Delivery is there for all your delivery needs, whether it's dinner for the family, flowers for your partner, or new houseplants for your new collection. Red Bike Delivery will gladly deliver those and everything in between. So what are you waiting for? Check out Red Bike Delivery on Facebook or Instagram for more information. Red Bike Delivery, because there's only one Earth.
You had mentioned something that I wanted to talk about. I can't remember what it was. Uh, so you're running for seventh district, uh.
Eaton County Commissioner.
What is, what is it exactly that you do? I know that you mentioned that you go to meetings, you come up, you bring up these issues at the meetings and you try to create a change for the local community.
Absolutely. Well, I'm not here to bash anyone. That's not my job. Um, but the current incumbent, Mark Mudrow, I don't know the guy. I understand we were in a pandemic. Some might argue we still are. It's a two-year term. I don't know who this guy, what he does, what he stands for, what he has done. So that's why I decided to take it upon myself to run a write-in campaign. Some might say it's an uphill battle.
Why did you choose that? Why did you choose that?
I was focused on something else, so I got into the race late. So I didn't have a choice.
Okay.
Um, I pray that the community supports me. I've got a lot of folks that state they will be writing my name down. Now, when the incumbent won two years ago, he ran unopposed. Now there are two other candidates on the Republican ticket, and technically I'm on the Democrat ticket as a write-in.
Who are the Republicans?
Ah, one guy I believe is like Clay Cornelius, and then I believe there's a female.
Okay.
You know, God willingly, I, you know, I advanced to the general election and we square off.
When is the general election? August?
The primaries.
The primary, I mean.
It's Tuesday, August second.
Oh, this Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Whoa.
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Wow. That's crazy.
Yes, exciting.
Yeah, that is exciting. And you said you passed out thirty thousand of those?
No, three thousand.
Three thousand?
Three thousand, yes.
That's crazy.
Yes, yes.
So how long have you been in the, running the campaign?
Man, it, it took me less than a week to pass out three thousand, so.
So you've been doing it for less than a week?
About a week, man. Yeah, about a week.
Whoa.
Yeah.
That is crazy.
Man.
Is that typical?
No. You know what? Uh, I, I believe Mayor Andy Shore went door to door.
Okay.
You know, when he first had his bid after Bernero stepped out and he ran against, uh, you know, Judy Brown Clark. So I, um, I don't know if he literally hit every single door in Lansing. If you do it early enough, you can do it, though.
How many, how many doors are there in Lansing?
There's over a hundred thousand residents.
Yeah.
So.
Just in the city of Lansing?
City of Lansing.
That's not including, like, I mean, Eaton County or for Eaton County, so.
Right, right.
So that, that expands like Charlotte and all those outskirts places.
It does, but again, just the, the only persons that are able, the constituents are only Delta Township residents.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I believe technically Waverly too. I don't, I don't even understand Waverly anymore. Is Waverly a part of Delta Township? I don't understand, man.
I have no idea.
You know, so.
I try to avoid that side of town. It's always busy.
Man, listen, it, it definitely beats Pleasant Grove and Holmes, I'll tell you that much. I'm not bashing them.
Let's talk about your growing up in, in the hood, as you, you had mentioned.
Hey, man, listen, man.
You, you had mentioned how you were privileged enough to, not privileged, I don't wanna say that. You were, you were, you had the opportunity to get out of it. You had the opportunity to essentially rise above. Your, the environment that you were kind of surrounded by, how did that come about?
Um, you know, so I went to Our Savior Lutheran for ten years, got my name on a plaque there for the John the Baptist Award. It was formerly on Holmes Road. Now it's over on Saint Joe Going Towards Grand Ledge.
Okay.
Um, what a privilege, you know, pre-K to eighth grade. My mother gave me the choice to go to Lansing Catholic Central. I decided, nah, I need to enter the real world. So I went to Sexton.
Oof.
Knocked out four years. Now I'm currently stationed at Sexton as a public safety officer with the Lansing School District. Um, did some criminal justice at Lansing Community College. Met my wife, married, four kids later. Had a run in, in twenty thirteen for city council at large in the city of Lansing as a write-in candidate.
Was it because you were late to the game?
Yeah, man! What are the chances, right? Goodness. Much bigger territory.
Yeah.
But when I tell you I made a splash, I made a splash. The city of Lansing adopted a mascot by the name of Cuff, Communities United with Food and Fitness, it's a links. That, that was all based off my, uh, my campaign.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, twenty seventeen, I ran for city clerk in the city of Lansing. Wasn't a write-in. Tried to do it by myself. What a mistake.
What do you mean? You tried doing it by yourself?
I, I ran the campaign all by myself with no help. Um, maybe raised two hundred dollars. It was just, uh, you, you don't, I've learned that you don't do anything by yourself. But the city of Lansing is a lot bigger than the seventh district of Eaton County.
Yeah.
Right? So I was actually, you know, I had a map. I was able to tackle, you know, the entire area in less than a week. My feet sure felt it.
What year was that?
Two thousand and seventeen is when I ran for city clerk.
I think I might remember you coming to my door. Have you been in this neighborhood before?
Um, it looks familiar. My, my sister used to live right around the corner here.
Okay.
Um, I didn't tackle a, a big portion at all. I went to a lot of events and, but I, I, you know, I came to understand that you have to meet the people where they are.
Hmm.
And the way to do that is to go door to door. And I'm not a salesman.
Yeah.
I'm a regular Joe Schmo.
Yeah.
Somebody that's trying to make a difference. I feel like I have made a difference in the Lansing schools. So why not expand that to my community where I live, breathe and sleep?
So is city commissioner a full-time position or is, no, it's part-time, so you get paid to do it?
You do, yes.
But you also have to work a, a normal job, your normal job.
You don't have to, but you might be out of a cardboard box.
Is it a decent paying job?
I think it's like ten grand.
Oh, okay. So enough to incentivize somebody to wanna like provide or do something for the community. You seem like somebody who wants to make a positive change for the community.
Absolutely.
All these positions that you've, you've ran for?
Yes, yes.
Do, what do you see yourself doing in the next? Like, let's say you don't win this. Let's just say, let's just say.
Okay.
What do you see yourself doing? Like, do, do you think you'll run for a different position some other time?
Um, if, if I'm not late, maybe, you know, maybe if I can appear on the ballot. I, you know, honestly, I think my chances are very, very decent.
Yeah.
You know, getting on that general ballot.
Well, I'm gonna say I don't live in Eaton County, so I can't vote, or Delta Township, I can't vote for you.
That's okay.
But.
That's okay.
But I like you. You're friendly. You're, you have a positive outlook on things. You seem to be like generally happy. Most people who like go door to door just seem beat up.
Well, listen, I definitely had a day or two where, you know, it's, it's five o'clock, well, it's four-thirty and I gotta get my kids to baseball and T-ball, so I'm literally running house to house like, oh, I do not wanna be out here another day. Let me just, you know, hustle this out, muscle this out. And, and if anyone's listening that's here in, in Delta Township and I didn't get to your door, I sincerely apologize. There might be a hundred doors, I wanna say tops, that I didn't get a chance to hit. I ran out of resources, honestly, messing around with the stock market. Um, hey, I'll be honest, you know?
Yeah.
But, um, if you give me a chance, you know, I wanna be the advocate for you. I really do. Um, I actually just started a small business. WhatWeOffer, so WhatWeOffered.net is the website address.
What is it?
Uh, man, I, I'm a marketing, uh, business consultant. So whatever you need from hiring to, I can, man, listen, 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 man.
Listening.
I, I can run a citywide campaign for your podcast.
Oh, yeah?
Citywide, the whole greater Lansing area. I can, I can run it for. I can get some guys that'll canvas for you tomorrow. Get these guys in here tomorrow, right? So.
How would that work?
Oh, man, I'm not gonna tell you how I get, you know, I'm not gonna tell you how to, how to, how to get the guys, but I can do it. So Mr. Corn Beef is in Frandor. I don't know if you've tried Mr. Corn Beef.
I haven't, no.
Uh, Gary Turner, great guy. Uh, it's a business based out of Detroit. He franchised it here, so he does corned beef sandwiches.
Okay.
Um, we ran a campaign for him on a lower scale, and I think it, it did pretty well. You know, we had him on the, the radio, you know, running advertisements for, you know, two weeks or whatnot. No cost out of pocket, you know?
Wow.
So I, you know, I know how to get some things done.
Yeah, that's cool. So what made you wanna start that business?
Man, I've been in marketing for ten years, man.
Really?
So this morning, I actually had a gig out at Family Dollar in the hood on the north side, right in the hood, man. Crazy, right? And, uh, man, you know, they said they had the company I was with, they said they hired two other people. So supposedly three of us ended up just being me.
Whoa.
So I, you know, pop open a giant tent, you know, set up four tables, all this manual labor. But I've been doing it for years, so it, it's nothing to me. Um, again, I'm just experienced. I'm a vet in the field. I know how to get it done.
Yeah. Yeah, that's important, though. I mean, and that's good for like somebody who wants to run a campaign because then you know, kinda know how to navigate that field, right?
Oh, man.
Makes it a little bit easier.
Listen, I'm an expert, man. It's not kind of. I, I'm telling you, man, it, you know, it's not always easy. Um, but I know how to blitz the market. I know how to blitz the market.
Yeah. So have you seen success since you started that business?
I, I haven't really put my best foot forward.
Okay.
I've had one proposal, um, to one company and they decided to go with a different company, a marketing company. So when I get to the point to where I, I wanna, you know, blitz the market, I'll do that. Um, if you wanna visit WhatWeOffer.net, you let me know, send me an inquiry and I will see what we can do for you.
Very cool. That's cool. Um, yeah, that's something that, like, I've had to learn how to do with this podcast, cuz I'm, I, I didn't do anything before this. Like, I, I just worked. I still work, but, you know, I just did that, came home and worked out. That was it. And then starting the podcast, now I'm like learning how to promote and kinda get the word out and then learning how to do the podcast on top of it. It's just, it's a whole thing. It's a whole thing. But that's very cool. It's cool, it's cool that there's people out there willing to do that for you.
Oh, absolutely. A hundred percent, yeah.
Makes things easier.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and at a, and at an affordable cost, right?
Right.
You know, it.
Yeah, cuz if you think about marketing, you think it's kind of expensive.
Right.
I think of, I think of marketing as expensive, like billboards and, you know, all kinds of things.
Well, it's all tailor-made, right? So you tell me, you know what we offer, you let me know what you offer and, and we can come to a consensus.
So what kind of marketing do you do, other than like pass things out, meet people? Like, do you do online marketing or?
It's, it's more guerrilla style, you know?
Guerrilla style?
Hey, you know.
Rough people up?
More door to door, meeting people where they are again.
Okay.
You know, set up an event, right? Inflatables. Yeah, I think that's a simple, I really started it. Here, here's the history. I really started it within the last couple of months, based on the need, in my opinion, the need for children's ministries in our black churches. Um, I grew up in a, you know, beautiful black church, and we had a kids ministry. But unfortunately, I feel like a lot of our churches don't have that now. And again, is it systemic? You know, what is it? I'm the one who's having kids now.
Yeah.
Right? At almost thirty-two, so I can understand why, you know, maybe a lot of these parents aren't, you know, bringing their kids to church. It's unfortunate, but I feel like maybe these churches need to do more outreach.
Yeah.
And it can be, you know, more successful. Again, I've had people tell me there are a couple of churches that do have prominent children's ministries. And I hope it's true. I haven't done my research, haven't visited all the churches.
What kind of church do you go to? What kind of church do you go to?
You know what? I've been frequenting Journey Life. Pastor Jared out in Holt. As well as Pastor Kevin Berry's church right here, uh, on Mount Hope.
Okay, so.
Excuse me.
You're good. So they don't have that many children's programs?
You know, you 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 walk into a church with now four kids. I don't I don't need my kids to be the majority, man. You know, that's a lot of great one on one attention, but. You know, you go to Mount Hope or Journey Life, I mean, it's it's incredible, man. You know, you got a multitude of kids all praising and worshiping God.
Did you grow up in church?
Absolutely.
Yeah, what what did you grow up going to?
Uh, it's a non denominational church off Waverly Road called Lansing Christian Center. Pastor Howard Davenport, late Pastor Howard Davenport.
I grew up going to a Baptist church in Charlotte, Calvary Baptist. Yeah. It it's a fundamental, fundamental Baptist church.
Fundamental.
Fundamental.
Long skirts.
Long skirts, dresses. Yeah, can't wear pants.
You still believe?
Well, that's a different cut question. I don't go to church and I don't really actively practice any religion.
But you know he's real. That's reality.
Ah, that's a question on the podcast. Well, uh, I've never had anybody ask me that. Um, on the podcast. I don't, I don't know. I don't not believe anything, but I don't necessarily believe.
So you're agnostic?
Essentially.
Like everyone, like everyone else who knows that he's real.
Again, I haven't done the active research in order to like. Believe one way or the other, other than what I know from growing up in church.
Well, I see, I I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're good.
I I believe that. You ask God something and you learn how to listen to him. And he'll answer you. I mean, he can talk to you through commercials. Through movies, through strangers. I'm telling you, man. You know, dreams. He can do it, man. But you gotta be willing to receive that answer. And it's not on your time. And you gotta use discernment, cuz it's not always God speaking either.
What do you mean? Could be like your uh, your your ego or inner voice.
Excuse me. I'm going completely off topic from my uh. Campaign here, but this is really fun. This is really fun. This is awesome. I believe that there are people who walk amongst us. Who are walking with demons. And they don't even realize it themselves. They don't even know it. They don't know that there's an evil spirit, you know, cultivating their soul. But God can redeem that evil spirit as well. When I was younger, I used to go. Pleasant Grove in Holmes. I used to go room to room on a weekly basis. I'm talking as young as. Eight, room to room, I'd stretch my arm. Lord God. Please, Holy Spirit, you know, bless this room. No evil, nothing is allowed in this place. I have not experienced any. Evil supernatural. Being in my entire life, and I believe it's because of that. And and actually believing and knowing that God is real.
That's interesting, though, because I've never experienced any evil spirit.
You know he's real, man. You know he's real.
But I've never prayed that. I've never walked, I've never walked into a room.
That's okay, but the the way you were raised has introduced God to you. I believe that every adolescent has the right. To know who God is.
I mean, everybody has the right, right? I mean, that's that's why we live in America and that's one of the great, great things about living here is that you can practice religion. And you can learn about anything you want to learn about. Right?
And the word Christian is just so.
Well, I mean, any religion.
Just tossing in the wind.
It is. It's a general term.
That's why I love I love the word believer. I'm a believer and I believe that every adolescent, every person has the right to. Come to know God on a personal level. And once they. You know, cultivate that spirit, the Holy Spirit, they become a child of God. And they learn morality. Right from wrong. And then you go from there. I've I'm I'm far from perfect, man. I I've done a lot of dirt in my time.
You don't think you can learn that on your own, though? Without, I mean, because. People know what's right and what's wrong, right? People know that murder is wrong. People know that rape is wrong. People know that being a crappy person is wrong.
It's your conscience, right?
Yeah, it's your conscience.
What's your conscience?
It's it it's you.
It's God.
But.
Your conscience is God.
But it is subjective in cer- in certain aspects.
I mean, if if if, you know.
Cuz like, like, for instance, let's say you feel that you're wrong for going into a movie theater, right? Like, that's your conscience. But like, I feel like I could go to go into a movie theater and be fine.
I I believe that your your that your conscience is God. That's that's what.
I'm not, I'm not debating you. I'm just, I'm just saying. I I don't want to debate religion. Isn't about this.
I've been, listen, man, I'm I'm I'm. I'm trying to move into a different sphere. Right? There's a campaign. Uh, entitled He Gets Us. It's hegetsus.com. Got each video's got about ten million views on YouTube. Uh, a church, forgot where the church is. Came together to sponsor this. Um, an elite, not even elite, but a small group of billionaires, I believe, came together and donated a hu- a hundred million dollars to this campaign. And they're now spreading the message of how Jesus. Was just like us when he walked this earth. How he suffered anxiety. Excuse me, and things like that. Incredible, man. Absolutely incredible. What a step forward, man.
What's incredible about that?
I think it's incredible to introduce Jesus in a different light.
As a. On a more human aspect.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I think a lot of people kind of put Jesus, the the guy who walked the earth. As this like mystical person, right? Like, like he was just perfect. Like, he didn't look at a woman and like, didn't like have thoughts or whatever, like.
Well, I I don't, I I can't say.
I'm just saying that there's certain, there's certain aspects of being a human that is just natural. And people think of Jesus as not having those.
Oh, I'm sure many, well, they say that he wasn't pleasing to the eye is what I've heard.
That he was ugly?
That's what they say.
Really? Who says that?
Doesn't mean he didn't get hit on, though. Oh, I'm sure you can Google it or your duck duck go, you know, I'm sure and and find some information on it.
I would think if I was a lady back in the day, I would want Jesus.
Well, listen, man, wha- what was I running?
Power.
When I was.
I'm attracted to power.
In either twenty thirteen or twenty seventeen, I had a. Minister tell me, you know, minister is such a vague term too, right? Some guy, some guy out of state somewhere, right? I mean, I blitzed the market so hard in both those campaigns that people around the nation knew who I was.
That's cool.
You know, told me that, you know, get ready, women are gonna hit on you and all this. This guy, man. You know, and that discernment, man, you know, you gotta be careful on.
A minister told you this?
Who you associate yourself, I think in a self proclaimed apostle, man. You know, actually, I had I had a pastor tell me that a po- it's not even a poss- possible to be an apostle. In in twenty twenty two. Cuz I believe the apostles were Jesus's disciples. The one, you know, I I haven't studied it enough to know. I'm not at the older gen. I just know that he's real. Yeah, that's that's what I know.
Fair enough. Yeah. There's definitely people out there that are scam artists, right? When it beco- when it comes to religion. I mean, you have even ministers or pastors or even. Um, what are the, what are those people called that run those like mega churches? Like.
Televangelists.
Televangelists, like they're scam artists. They're flying around on jet planes, asking you to send more money to them and donate more money to the church and. Meanwhile, like my brother and my sister went to a college called Crown College. It's a it's a Bible college. And the pastor wore like. These tailored, expensive suits. And uh, then he like drove like a Bentley and like, he's supposed to be like this man of God, but he like. Looks down on people who dress less than him.
Well, you heard about the pastor in New York City that got robbed at gunpoint during a live stream? Supposedly, he had, you know, thousands of dollars of jewelry on. And so they stole his jewelry. Of course, they think it may have been a setup so he can collect insurance money. Of course, I mean, there's always gonna be speculation. Do I think it's okay to wear jewelry? I'm missing my gold chain right now. Am I gonna buy a gold chain? Am I gonna put this in the market? I made a decision to put it in the market, okay? Listen, man. If you're winning souls, that's what's important. If you're giving back, that's what's important. I love the campaign He Gets Us. I can tell you that much right now. That's all I can speak on.
That's cool. That's cool. I respect that. I respect that. I'm probably gonna get a lot of hate for this one. No, I've had a lot of people on that are religious. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't affect me. I don't, I don't believe one way or the other, so I don't. I don't like. Take things personal. I'm open to discussion and I'm open to listening.
Well, well, Delta Township, let me tell you this. I'm what's called a conservative Democrat. FDR.
What does that mean?
My guy. Franklin Delano Roosevelt and his wife did a lot for America. When it comes to. What our modern, you know, food stamp system, right? I mean, it's huge, right? Um, he was a huge. Huge Christ follower, in my opinion. He advocated. For, you know, the love of God. So. I'm not a liberal. That's just reality. I do consider myself a Democrat when it comes to democracy.
In what aspects?
And you know, more of an independent than anything. I just want to see the best candidate. In office, the best person to do the job. Person who is gonna be accountable. Fair.
I have a question. For uh, running for commissioner. What aspects of that position are considered Republican and Democrat? It doesn't seem like.
You tell me, man. You you tell me.
Cuz if you're doing the job that's for the people and what's best for the community, why is that a a right or a left issue?
I cannot believe, when we go to the poll Tuesday, unless you unless you've already voted early at your clerk's office or absentee. We are going to have to choose one side. We have to choose either Democrat. Or Republican. If if you choose a candidate on each side. That negates your entire ballot. What are we doing, man?
What are we doing?
That is crazy, but of course, that doesn't apply to the general election, but it applies to the.
Why is that?
I have no idea, man. To to narrow down the candidates, I mean, ah, man, sick, man.
It is.
That's sick. Who's listening to this? I somebody explain it to me. Who who backed this proposal? What's the bill? I'm sure we could do the research and figure it out to see who actually introduced it.
I'm sure.
And how it was passed. It's crazy, man. Crazy.
That is crazy.
Doesn't make sense to me.
That's why I don't think I could get involved in politics. Because it's stressful. It's stressful to hear like that. And like, it doesn't seem fair. And then, like, I've had other politicians in here who've been just grilled or they've been kicked off ballots. It's like. To hear their stories is like, what? That happened? How is how does how is that happening? And how do we not know about it?
Well, you know what I just heard? I think he announced it actually a while ago, but uh. The former chief of police of Detroit Police is now running as a write in candidate for governor.
Yeah, he was actually supposed to come on the podcast.
Whoa. What happened?
Um, well, he was supposed to come on before he got kicked off the ballot. And then all that stuff happened. He got kicked off and I I didn't continue reaching out to him, which I probably should reach back out to him.
Well, look at Mike Mike Duggan. Remember Mike Duggan?
No, I don't know.
Mike Duggan is the mayor of Detroit and he ran as a write in candidate and won his mayor bid.
Wow, well, wasn't there some some speculation that the guy who's running for mayor or governor? That was mayor. What's his name? Uh, Chief Craig or whatever?
That, right.
Wasn't there some speculation that he was corrupt in some some ways?
I regardless, he should have, he should have hired what we offer. If he would have hired what we offer, he would not have to worry about. Um, fake signatures. It's that that I don't know anything about his corruption. That's how he got kicked off the ballot was because of fake signatures.
Well, I'm talking about during his time as a. Mayor or whatever.
I don't know. I don't think he was ever mayor. Was he mayor?
Or chief of police. I'm sorry, yeah, chief of police.
Hey, Detroit Police has an outstanding force, man. They they run it, in my opinion, they run it like the state police.
Have you, have you ever done any work with them?
No, no, but. They would probably pick me up in a heartbeat, you know. You apply, they run their own academy. You don't have to have a degree. You know, if you have the experience or they find you fit, they they train you themselves. But you're in Detroit.
You don't want to work in Detroit?
Man, I don't, I don't know anybody. I mean, that's dangerous. And there there was a guy on the force within the last, I want to say, three years. He'd been on the force, I'd say, twenty years, vet. Uh, believe, uh, you know, blackmail. Ran into a house. There were reports of a kidnapping, so he ran in there by himself. Probably done it a a million times, though. Maybe he knew, maybe he knew the people there, knew the home. They got him, man.
Killed him?
Killed him.
That dude's a hero. The guy's a hero. I mean, he died trying to trying to save somebody.
Gotta wait for backup, man. Gotta wait for backup, but twenty year vet.
But it's Detroit.
And it's Detroit. Listen, they say in Chicago. I don't know about Detroit, but I believe there's places in Chicago, you don't stop at the red lights. You don't, if you see a red light in certain areas and neighborhoods, you drive right through those red lights.
Well, maybe that guy seen something in that moment that if he didn't react right then and there, that.
It's very possible.
That, you know. That whoever was kidnapped could be dead or gone.
I sure hope that that city has taken care of his family.
I hope, I hope so.
Can guarantee you had life insurance, but I sure hope that they are doing something above and beyond that to take care of his family.
Yeah, absolutely. What was his name?
I don't know. You can Google, just Google it. I mean, I'm sure he he's probably the only Detroit police officer that's passed away, you know, got murdered within the last three years. Hopefully.
Was it this year? Oh, yeah, while being ambushed, whoa.
Three years ago.
A Detroit police officer was shot and killed on Wednesday after allegedly ambushed by a nineteen year old gunman. While responding to a nine one one call of gunshots being fired, authorities said. Detroit Police Chief James E. White said that the four responding officers engaged and killed the gunman. Imani Mc Davis. As he was allegedly approaching the injured police officer and his partner. And his partner in what investigators believe was an attempt to carry out further attacks. Well. Police have not determined the shooter's motivation. Officer Lauren Courts forty and his partner had just arrived at the nine one one call. And were still in their patrol cars as Davis opened fire from an upstairs window, striking Courts, White said.
Yeah, I think that's a completely different story. So is that officer still alive?
I don't know.
Cuz that's that's gotta be a completely different story. I can, you want me to look it up? I can look it up.
Sure, go ahead.
All right, let me, let me see what I can do.
But that's one thing that's crazy about police officers is that, you know, like, when they, when they, when they go to a scene, oftentimes. There's only one of them. Only one of them respond and then the other ones have to, or that one has to call for backup. And if you see something in that moment where you have to respond i- in you're you're limited on whether or not somebody's gonna make it, somebody's gonna die, get killed or. You have to react now. Then they have to, they have a choice to make.
Says, um. See, I'm seeing two different names. I see police officer Harold F. Tulke, T U L K E. No, no, that's no, that's not him. That's not him. Maybe I should save all these bookmarks next time, right? Lauren Courts, let me see if that's who it is. That's five days ago.
Yeah, it was just recently.
Holy moly. Nope, that's definitely not it. That's not him. If anybody knows, please reach out to this podcast.
Yeah, absolutely.
And let this man know.
Uh, what's this? Uh, what's this? Uh, a tragic day, one officer killed, another wounded on Detroit's west side. A Detroit police officer was killed and another wounded after a gunman opened fire as they responded to a home invasion on Detroit's west side Wednesday night, police James Craig said. Rashine McLean, whom Craig described as an 18 year old veteran on the force, was killed by a single gunshot wound to his neck. Whoa. But by a high powered rifle. Holy crap. Craig said in a news conference outside Sinai Grace Hospital. A second officer, a three year old veteran, a three year veteran was shot in the leg, he said. Today is a tragic day for Detroit's police family, said Craig, who was joined by Detroit Mayor Mike Duggan at the news conference. The incident occurred at about seven 30 PM near Wyoming and Chippewa. Officers from the 12th precinct had, had been called to a house on a, on a report of a home invasion in progress, Craig said. When they arrived and the officers, officers found the resident running out frantic, saying a man inside was armed with a rifle. After requesting backup, the officer went inside with two more officers to clear the home. The chief said they, they cleared the upper level, but the officers went downstairs. The suspect opened fire, striking the officers, according to Craig. One of the officers returned fire and struck the suspect who fled the scene and escaped a short distance, but was arrested soon after, Craig said. The wounded officer was hospitalized in temporary serious condition. His name was not released. As news spread about the veteran officer who died, hundreds of his colleagues gathered at the hospital in support, to show support. Craig said it was a greater outpouring than he had ever seen. Whoa. He really is a hero, Craig said, of the officer who was named by police on Thursday. He fought a good fight.
See, and then there comes the sermon, right? Because I believe um, Chief, Chief Craig stated that he did not go in alone, right? That he went in with other officers, right? So could that be to protect his integrity? Absolutely. Could the story I initially saw be wrong as well? Absolutely. Regardless, he was, he's definitely a hero.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And he tragically lost his life.
And then you said another one, I just saw that five days ago was murdered. Yeah, come on, man.
Yeah.
Come on, man. They Detroit's, you know, they'll train you and they start you out, let's say at 40, you know, before overtime, you know?
Yeah.
Is it really worth $20 an hour to put your life on the line, man?
Dude, I make more than that building cars.
Right.
And that's safe.
Exactly.
It's not worth it.
Exactly.
It really is not worth it. That's where I think as much as people, as much as there is like division between police officers and the African American community. I think it's very important that we have people in our community who get paid to serve the community and the thing is, is like, I remember working, like hiring, hiring in at GM and I hired in as what they considered a two tier. And so I was working with people making less, I was making less than them. I was making like tie topped out like 17, whereas like some of the traditional people were making like 30 an hour. Like, how was that fair? And what's going to incentivize me to want to do as good of a job as them or to care about my job just as much? So if I'm not, if I'm barely making it, like what's going to incentivize me to want to do a good job?
Hmm.
And so when you're, when you're paying these people, even like yourself, um, you know, who is essentially a security guard at a school. If you're not making, I mean, you said you don't make great money doing it, but you're passionate about what you do. But anybody could get that job and not be passionate about it and just not care and, and it's, it's very easy to do that.
Hmm.
It takes a special person.
Hmm. Lots of patience.
And lots of patience and I'm sure it takes training.
Oh man, yes. So, so you know, I'm, I'm public act 330 certified. Um, you know, if you gotta use handcuffs, you gotta use handcuffs. I like to think that we protect from outside threats more than anything, but unfortunately we do encounter internal threats as well. We're there to make sure that the learning environment is safe for everyone in the building.
Hmm.
Whether it's staff or students.
Yeah. That's a difficult, that's a difficult job when you have, how many kids in, are in a school?
Um, Sexton has over a thousand.
Whoa.
I think Everett's the biggest school.
Whoa.
Yeah.
And how many of the?
About 1500 at Everett, I would say.
How many of you are there?
At Sexton?
Uh.
Five, what? Six of us.
Whoa.
Yeah, man, it's, it's a lot. Yeah.
That is crazy.
Yeah.
So it would be almost impossible for you guys to control everybody.
Listen, if, if, you know, now Everett was a whole different story. So I, I started the school year at Everett and then I was transferred to Sexton um, by request.
Okay.
I mean, I did everything I could do at Everett. They actually, you know, hired a new principal during last school year. So Everett was, but, but Everett was, you know, swarmed with gang violence.
Really?
You know, the, the real, the real stuff. Sexton.
How bad is it?
Yeah.
What do you mean gang violence?
Oh.
Like kids are joining gangs?
Oh yeah. Oh yeah. You know, you got startup gangs all around the city. I like to believe that it's unfortunate, but I believe there's a shooting every single day.
There is a shooting every single day.
Every single day, man.
I don't, I don't think there's anything to like to believe. There's, that's a fact.
That's unfortunate, man.
I see it every single day. It's.
Sick, man.
It's sickening and it's always a young person.
Sick.
I don't understand it.
Yeah.
Um, my wife has, or I guess my sister-in-law, her kids go to Lansing schools and one of the things that my wife was telling me is that her kid, she was picking her kids up and her daughter ran and got in the vehicles like, let's go mom, there's going to be a fight. And uh, I think she might have mentioned somebody had a gun or something. I don't know. I don't remember for sure, but it's like to be a part of that environment and to be worried about what's going to happen.
Hmm.
After school is like, it's, it's insane. Like I remember growing up, I didn't have to worry about that stuff.
Hmm. Well, that's why my job duty is extremely crucial.
Yeah.
To the school district as a whole. So new superintendent's in there. He believes in us and uh, we should, the department should be there to stay.
Awesome. That's awesome. How long have we been going? Oh, not even an hour. Wow. This is a good episode. You're, you're easy to talk to and, and fun and I like it.
Hey, man, hey, may, maybe uh, maybe we do this again.
Yeah, absolutely. Why not?
Hey, imagine doing this out in the middle of the street somewhere downtown. I mean, how much, you know?
Oh, that'd be too much noise.
Too much noise.
Yeah, the microphones would pick up all the horns and people walking and people yell things.
Yeah. I was, I was thinking, I'm like, I wonder how many people have reached out to Joe Rogan? Probably thousands of people.
Probably.
As, you know, startups, man. How long you been doing this?
Uh, about a year and a half.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I just hit over a hundred episodes.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, actually I've had um, Andy, Andy Shore, he was on the podcast, but unfortunately that one was at the start of the podcast. When I first started and it didn't record audio.
Ah.
Yeah. So I was still learning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, hit him up, man. I'm sure he'd be more than willing to come back on.
I thought about it.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Why not, man? He's, he's awesome, man.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with him personally.
His kids attend Everett.
Oh, really?
Or did at least, yes.
Okay. I don't, I would, I would think that if I was him, I wouldn't send my kids to Lansing schools.
That, that tells you how much he believes in our community. I mean, he's that guy.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's cool because it shows that you aren't better than the people that you're serving.
Well, plus I was there too. So, you know.
Yeah. You protected them.
No, no, yeah.
Um, but the thing is, is like, a lot of people in the community don't like him. Ow. You didn't know that?
So who, who, who's going to take him down in the next election, right?
I don't know. I don't know. Who's, when is the next election?
For, for mayor of the city of Lansing?
We just had it last year.
Really? I, man, I've been in Delta Township, so I, I can't even, I can't even vote in any Lansing election anymore.
Oh.
The city of Lansing, I mean, so.
Can you run for anything?
No.
You have to live in the.
You gotta live in the city.
Whoa.
Yes.
That's crazy. That's a weird thing because you do live in Lansing, but it's.
Yeah. Well, you look at Rick Snyder, the guy practically owns Ann Arbor, right? You know, and.
Yeah.
I mean, man. Yeah, I don't know. Big Gretch, right? We love you, Big Gretch.
Do you? A lot of people don't.
I, man, man, see, you're just ragging on the Democrats, man, right?
Not ragging on Democrats. I like Democrats.
You know what? It's, and, and I.
I like Andy Shore. I'm a fan.
I've had a couple uh, constituents, you know, knocking doors, tell me that there's about to be an overhaul, you know, that conservatives are taking over at the house and you know, whatnot come November and so what are you, you telling me that Donald Trump is gonna, you know, come on, man. I mean, come on, that's just.
Yeah, I don't know.
It sounds too good to be true. On a lower scale, maybe.
I think, I think the problem is, is people see the extreme liberals, right? And they see the extremism of that party and people who are on the left typically can't, they can't, they can't, like, they can't side with it. They're almost left without a party because they're more neutral than anything, but then the left starts pushing the agendas this far and they're like, yeah, I don't.
So I'm going to the right.
I'm going to the right because they, they are essentially a man without a land, you know, they, they want to go somewhere where they have a party.
So what's up with abortion, man? You got 25 years, man. Over the next 25 years, it's, it's uh, it's in place.
Now, it's crazy.
Do you know the history of abortion?
Uh, the Roe, Roe v. Wade and how it was instated?
How abortion clinics began.
Um, were they like adoption clinics, right?
From my understanding, it was a Caucasian woman who wanted to control the black population.
Whoa.
So she introduced.
I feel like we should fact check that.
Abortion clinics. Go ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna fact check.
Go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not saying I don't believe you. I just don't want.
But, but now you got the left pushing this narrative as if it, it wasn't a form of genocide to begin with. Incredible, man. Incredible.
The history and impact of Planned Parenthood. In 1916, the idea of Planned Parenthood began at the first birth clinic, control clinic in Brownsville, Brooklyn. Today, Planned Parenthood affiliates operate more than 600 health centers across the United States and Planned Parenthood is the nation's leading provider. Okay, that's not what I want.
Sounds like a bio.
Yeah. On October 16th, 1960, Sanger, Sanger took, together with her sister Ethel Brine and the, and activist Phineah Mendel, opened the country's first birth clin, control clinic in Brownsville, Brooklyn. Women lined up down the block to get birth control and information. Okay, blah, blah, blah. Uh, nine days later, police raided the clinic and shut it down. All three women were charged with crimes related to sharing birth control information. Uh, Sanger, Sanger refused to pay the fine and spent 30 days in jail where she educated other inmates about birth control. Although Brownsville clinic was shut down, Sanger went on to travel the country to share her vision. A vision that had deeply harmful, harmful, that had deeply harmful blind spots. Uh, Sanger believed in eugenics and inherently racist and obli, obliest? How do you say that? Ideology, ideology that labeled certain people unfit to have children. Eugenics is a there, is a theory that society can be improved through planned, planned breeding for desirable traits like intelligence and industrious, industriousness, industriousness. In the early 20th century, eugenic, eugenic ideas were popular among highly educated, privileged and mostly white Americans. Margaret Sanger pronounced her belief in an alignment with the eugenics movement many times in her writings. Especially, this thing keeps popping up, especially in the sci, scientific controlled birth, journal birth control review. At times, Sanger tried to argue with the, a eugenics that was not applied based on race or religion. But in a soc, in a society built on the belief, belief of white supremacy, physical and mental fitness are always judged based on race. Eugenics therefore is inherently racist. She had beliefs that from the beginning undermined her movement for reproductive freedom and caused harm to countless people. Uh, I want to read this next paragraph. Sanger was so intent on her mission to advocate for birth control that she, she chosen to align herself with ideas and organizations that were ableist and white supremacist. In 1926, she spoke to the women's auxiliary of the Ku Klux Klan at a rally in New Jersey to promote birth control methods. Sanger endorsed the 1927 Buck and Bell decision in which the court, Supreme Court ruled that states could forcibly sterilize people deemed unfit. Whoa. Without her, without their consent and sometimes without their knowledge. Whoa. How do they do that? The acceptance of this decision by Sanger and other thought leaders laid the foundation for tens of thousands of people to be sterilized, often against their will.
Hmm.
Whoa. Um, I'm going to read the next one too. This is interesting. As a result of these choices, the reproductive rights movement in many cases depend, depend, deepened. I can't read today. I should have you read this. Racial injustice in the healthcare system. The field of modern gene ecology was founded by Jay Marion Sims, who was the mid 1800s repeatedly and forcibly performed invasive experiments on enslaved black women without anesthesia. Whoa. In 1939, Sanger began what was called the Negro Pro, Project. Am I allowed to read that?
Come on, man.
Um, alongside black leaders like W E B Du, Du Bois.
Yeah, yeah.
Mary McLoud Bethune and Rev. Adam Clayton Powell. The mission of the Negro Project was to put black doctors and nurses in the, in charge of birth control clinics to reduce mistrust of a racist healthcare system. Sanger lost control of the project and black women were sent to white doctors for birth control and follow-up appointments. Deepening the racist and paternalistic problems of healthcare in the South. Continuing to this day, black women's experiences and pain are too often dismissed or ignored by doctors and other healthcare providers, which alongside historical dehumanization of black people can contribute or contributes to staggering and avoidable disparities in the health system or health outcomes, rather.
Hmm.
Wow. And it goes on. It's really long.
It's a pretty broad article there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that is pretty crazy. They were performing uh, surgery on, on black women without any anesthesia.
Well, we can Google eugenics. I haven't done any research, but I know it's not a positive. I know eugenics is not a positive. So I would love to see, you know, what, what populates and uh, that'll tell you the whole story right there.
So eugenics, the study of how to arrange reproduction within, within a human population to increase the occurrence of heritable characteristics regarded by, as desirable.
Come on, man.
Developed largely by Sir Francis Galton. As a method of improving the human race, eugenics was increasingly discredited as unscientific and race racially biased during the 20th century and especially after the adoption of its doctrines by the Nazis. Woo. In order to justify their treatment of Jews, disabled people and other minority groups.
And this is the woman who is technically the mother of abortion, right?
Hmm. Yeah.
And that's what she stood for. And, but you've got the left. I'm, I, why do you have to choose a side? Why?
Why do you?
They made me choose, you have to choose Republican or Democrat to run in this election. So that's what they told me.
So you feel like you identified more with the Democrats?
I'm, I'm a conservative Democrat, man. That's just reality.
Yeah.
That, that's reality. Um, the Trump era is done. Nothing against, you know, I, I just don't like his rhetoric. Uh, Mr. Trump, I don't like your rhetoric. I, I don't like your rhetoric.
That's probably the nicest thing anybody's ever said to him.
I, I don't, I don't like his rhetoric. I think uh, he was, God used him as a tool.
Um. For what?
Uh, we're seeing it. We're, we're seeing it, right? The, the SCOTUS, the SCOTUS, man. That's, that's huge, right? So bringing a lot of, of issues to light, in my opinion. A lot of issues to light.
Like what?
Um.
In your opinion?
Well, definitely abortion. Right? Now that you got a, you know, majority right SCOTUS. Um, there are certain agendas uh, that are being aimed at and pushed and uh, succeeded.
So you think it's a good thing? I mean.
I, I've got four kids, man.
Yeah.
I've got four kids. Can you do what you want to do with your body? Sure. I agree. You can do what you want to do with your body. Um, I just look at the history of it.
Yeah.
Can you argue with history though? And you know, people always go with the rape and the incest, things like that.
Well, I mean, you can still get an abortion if you need it, right? It's not.
Certain states. I think certain states.
I'm pretty sure you can still get an abortion though.
I think there, there are certain.
Stipulations.
Well, there are certain, certain, you know, practices, hospitals.
Yeah.
In states that want to allow it no matter what.
Right.
I'm hearing an argument now about, would you rather save the mother or save the child?
Hmm.
It's, it's sad that we have to even argue that.
What would you do though?
I, I can't speak on it, man.
Because like, I mean, that happens.
I don't even want to think about it, man.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I know somebody that had to make that choice and it ruined them and not ruin them, but like that, making that choice defined the rest of their life.
Yeah.
And it, it's a difficult choice to make. I don't, honestly don't know what I would choose. Um, because like if my wife had that happen, like if we're in that situation, I know that she would be mad if I chose her and didn't choose the baby, but I was, I, I know that we have kids, like our circumstances right now. Like if we had another kid, like, I'm like, well, I don't want my kids growing up without their mom either. So like, what do you choose? One life or another?
Yeah, man. You know, bad things, bad things, quote unquote, bad things happen to good people all the time.
Well, people look at it as a bad thing, but I look at it as a situation that happened to you that you can use to rise above. I mean, I've had bad things happen to me. I've had a lot of bad things happen to me, but you don't have to let those bad things define who you are for the rest of time.
Hundred percent. I agree.
And that's, that's why this podcast was formed because, you know, like I hated, I hated the, I hate victim's mentality. I hate it.
Hmm.
I mean, people like, there's a lot of attention attached to it, especially right now, uh, with a lot of different subjects, especially with the rise of mental health. People just want to like wallow in their pity and they don't want to, they don't want to fix themselves. And that's a problem for me.
I think it's, I think it's important to address mental health though.
Absolutely.
Awareness.
Absolutely. I'm all for mental health awareness and uh, think different programs. Like I've had several people on the podcast that have mental health uh, like businesses or organizations or like um, uh, like this one lady. or like, um, uh, like this one lady, her name's Katie. And she's, there's a center opening up here in Lansing where it, the whole, it's an old school that they are forming into this mental health, like facility where there's gonna be like classrooms to like learn how to just a bunch of different things, like, like teach you about mental health. They're gonna, um, uh, they're gonna have like meditation and yoga and all these different practices that help people with overcoming. They're gonna have therapy and they're, they're looking to provide services that aren't readily available for people who can't just go to therapy, like. Um, I know somebody that was just looking for therapy and they needed it instantaneously and they couldn't find a therapist that would, that would call them back because we're in the middle of a mental health crisis right now, especially coming out of the pandemic. I mean, people are more depressed and have anxiety than ever before. And what do you do about that? But there's people in our community that are, that are making a difference and they're, they're trying to help these people. But that's one thing that I have personally witnessed with other people is that victim's mentality, like they go through something that happened years ago and they don't wanna let go. Or like they'll go to therapy and they don't wanna follow the steps to try to get better. And, but there are people that have gone through things that are really bad things. And they find a way to get over it and they use it as motivation and inspiration to help other people. And that's what rising above is all about.
Hey, that's awesome, man. That's, man, what an incredible, uh, almost metaphor, right? That's, that's awesome, man.
Yeah, I mean, literally when I was coming up with this podcast, I was talking to my wife. I'm like, I wanna do a podcast, like to share my story. And I couldn't think of something that would explain like my situation. I'm like, what? I was, I was at work, like, I, that's all I thought about. I'm like, what? What did I go through that like defined me? And because I, you know, like that my circumstances did define me for a little while, but then I found, I found a way to get over. I went to therapy and I actively like tried to become a better person. And I have to think in like, like I, I overcame my, my, my situation. Like what did I do? I, I rose above it. Ah, Rising Above Podcast is literally like came to me like that. And then it's become this thing.
Are you a Breakfast Club fan or you stay away from it?
That's a podcast, right?
To a certain extent, yeah, they're on the radio, yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I haven't listened to it.
Give, you got some time, give it a shot.
I will. I like to listen to podcasts and, and different things, so.
Yeah, it, it's, it's black people, man. And that's the thing, man. There's, there's racism on all fronts and I listen to it, man, but Charlamagne, you know you're racist, man. That's just reality, dude. You know it, man.
Oh, I have listened. That's Charlamagne's podcast or his talk show or whatever? I have listened to that.
You know, I love listening to it, man, but you know, cause there's a lot of information. You know, a lot of news. They do a lot of interviews. Funny. But it's just unfortunate, man, that, you know, that there, that racism still exists. But it's something that will never cease to exist on all fronts from all races.
Yeah, that's one thing that I, I don't get. I, I don't understand racism, especially in twenty twenty-two. It's like, why are we racist? Like we have other problems.
I believe, I believe they, the Breakfast Club was in one area of Canada and they, they yanked them. Within like a year, if not less than a year, probably because of their rhetoric, man.
They don't want to promote racism.
It's extremely informational, though, man. Yeah. Like I know DJ Envy, you know, he, he runs it. He's I don't think he's, you know, he's on that same level as Charlamagne, but, um, yeah, Angela Yee, I've never heard anything out of her, but Charlamagne, man, that guy, man. Have you seen the Wendy Williams movie?
No, no.
Watch the Wendy Williams movie, man.
What is that?
You know Wendy Williams.
I know who she is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It, it's her, uh,
It's like a documentary?
Her biography, basically. But it, it's somebody acting portraying her. But then she does appear at the end of the movie and.
That's cool.
And I believe that's how Charlamagne got his start, actually, was working with her.
Very cool. Is it on Netflix? Or what's it on?
Came out within the last two years. I don't know how we watched.
You know, I think I did see something on one of the streaming platforms about that. Yeah. All right, cool. Uh, is there anything else you wanna mention? What's the, what's the name of your company again? Or your business?
It's called whatweoffer.net. Whatweoffer.net. Yes. Business needs, um, I'm your consultant, marketing. Again, when it comes to hiring, blitzing the market, I'm that guy. You know, like I said.
Guerrilla warfare.
Listen, I, I knocked out three thousand doors myself in a week on foot.
If you want your customers to be beat up and, and be forced to come to your business and.
Google guerrilla style, man. You just gotta, you gotta Google guerrilla style marketing, man. It's, it's meeting people where they are.
That's important.
It's a hands-on approach. I'm, I'm talking hitting the streets, passing out flyers, man.
Well, there's nothing better to, better than face-to-face. When somebody comes up to me and they're like, hey, you wanna hear about my business? Yeah, sure. Like that's why like I, I mean, it's part of the being, uh, part of the community. Cause you learn about people's businesses.
I know we're wrapping up real quick. So I was in Meyer, let's say, within the last year. Had a guy approach me and tell me that Jesus already came back a second time in like the night, in like the sixties.
Man, we're late.
I'm like, so why doesn't anybody, or the forties or sixties, why? And it is, it's like a religious organization that teaches this. I'm like, so why didn't anybody know?
Why isn't it in the history books?
The guy said, Jesus is supposed to come in like, you know, on clouds, huge, bright, you know?
Some of the things that people believe, I'm like, are you really that dumb?
Crazy, man. Incredible, man. Incredible.
That's crazy.
Yeah, yeah, but, um, Seventh District, Eaton County. Delta Township, Tuesday, August second. Please write my name down, Jeremick Claiborne the third. You can write down Claiborne and I'm sure I'll be set. I wanna be that guy to represent you. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.